Hello everyone. Hope you all well. How's it going everyone, how are you? How are you all doing?
Good evening.
Hello everyone, whoever's there, thank you for joining us this evening. We're just gonna give another few minutes, where is Lionel, I'm looking for Lionel. Where is Lionel, I don't know if Lionel joined us, here's Lionel, then Lionel connecting right now. Let me just wait for Lionel and then I'll introduce everyone and then I'm gonna mute everyone except Lionel. We'll just wait for Lionel to join us, otherwise, how's everyone?
Very good, everyone's fine.
Good, while we're talking, just remember guys, tomorrow there's Ratan Shem, 8 o'clock. I'm gonna be giving the show on Parashat Ashavua, the usual show that we give on Parashat Ashavua. So please join us tomorrow, the same link, 8 o'clock, Parashat Ashavua. Lionel, are you with us?
If you cancel it, it's gonna be against us.
Where is Lionel, Lionel, are you with us, hello Mr Kruger.
Steven Kruger.
Lionel, are you with us, how are you Lionel?
Lionel is on the line, I don't know why he's not answering.
I tell you, I tell you what's gonna happen, Lionel, please unmute yourself. I'm sure that you can hear me Lionel, you can, please. You can unmute yourself, Lionel, can you hear me, I can't hear you Lionel.
Sounds like a counselor.
Lionel, please unmute yourself, cuz I'm gonna mute everyone else, where are you? Let me look, Lionel, Lionel, do you mute, please unmute yourself, again. I see that you.
There we go.
Okay, great. How are you Lionel?
Rabbi, can you hear me?
Good louder.
Okay, I can hear you loud and clear, even if you talk a bit louder, it will be great. Cuz I wanna introduce you and I wanna start the talk because we given, we promised that we're gonna speak for maximum thirty minutes. So hi everyone, I know that usually I give a show, but I have a chat with my friend Lionel a few days ago. And we have a very good chat and we decide that, I asked Lionel if he wouldn't mind to give us some ideas. What is the job of a counselor? And how we can help and we leave it to Lionel, please to address us. With no more due, Lionel, the microphone is yours, I'm gonna mute everyone, please unmute yourself again, okay? I'm muting everyone, Lionel, unmute yourself again.
Okay, can everybody hear you okay, Rabbi, you give me the thumbs up that you can hear me fine?
I'm, I'm gonna up hundred percent.
Okay, great, thank you, good evening everybody and special thanks to Rabbi David Levy for inviting me onto this. I'm gonna call it the scholar forum this evening, I'm gonna try and keep this evening as relaxed as possible. I hope that my makeup has been done fine. From, from a distance, if you can all see me well, thank you. Thanks for everybody who joining, special thanks to Steven Kruger. To our deputy chief whip of the DA in Johannesburg, Graham De Cock. I haven't gone through all the people, a special thanks to my next line up in our, in our group which is Dave Fisher. He's the counselor in Ward seventy-four which is next to Norwood, that's the Bramley area. Essentially, I had this discussion, hello Dave. I, I decided to have this discussion with, with David who's a resident in our area. And he tells me that people feel somewhat disgruntled maybe by the DA. Maybe they're disgruntled by other things, maybe they're disgruntled by COVID. I don't know all the things of what people are disgruntled about, but I'm gonna try and canvas a few issues as the council in the area. Firstly, a council's job is one, we are, where we interface between the residents and the, the city officials in Johannesburg. So the first thing I obviously would like to, to put to everybody is. There's a reciprocal obligation on residents to also come on board and do their thing. So what does it mean, do their thing, well typically, if I was to put it in the most primitive terms. If there's an accident, you don't phone your council to call the ambulance, you call the ambulance immediately. You don't phone the counselor when there's a water outage, you contact Joburg Water. And what I've gone and done on behalf of my colleagues in order to try and improve the service delivery in the city of Joburg is that. I set up a website called Look and Log which I inherited from my colleagues and I've taken it a step further. That allows residents to, in a single space, to go and log a complaint. Either water issues, power issues, pick it up issues and they all outlined on the, on the website. Then many residents say, well what else have you done as a council in the area? Well, on the website which is called Ward seventy-two Joburg. I have a facility there which is called FAQ, facts, answers and questions. Where I've spent, I, I would probably say hundreds of hours trying to put useful articles together. And as residents ask me questions, I go to the, this particular portal. And I, I type out the question that residents give me and thereafter what I do is I try and research the answer. And this database is available to all councils in the city of Johannesburg. And obviously residents now under COVID everywhere in South Africa. So being on the front line currently with, with COVID doesn't make our job easier. And if I was to, for example, go to a situation just recently in the Dave Fisher's area which is the power. Station or the, what they call a chamber that blew up. And the transformer was replaced in record time, I don't think David and myself actually. Realized that it was gonna be done so quickly to the, to the point that. At eight thirty-five in the morning, I remember the time specifically. I got the complaint from residents, our power's out, can you assist us, these are the reference numbers which is absolutely essential. Residents need to give us reference numbers, councils do not log and I'm not trying to be. Otherwise, councils do not log complaints on the first line. We ask residents to come and join us, come on board and do that. Obviously, there could be special exceptions, if you're ninety-five years old and you, and you have an eye problem. Or you don't have a computer or you don't have WhatsApp or you don't have access to, to those types of facilities. Yes, possibly in, in the ward where I'm at, Ward seventy-two, we do have far older residents. But quite surprisingly, I'll take somebody like to single him out, I like singling out Judge Goldstein. Judge Goldstein will log his complaints and he'll send me a reference number. And I think that we, we can't keep on throwing our hands up in despair and saying, well, we don't know how to do it. Well, the information is there and a little bit of perseverance would obviously be, would, would be grateful from our side. Especially when we flooded with complaints, going back for example to the art education facility. The, the issue was logged, city power got the generator there as soon as humanly possible. It's not something like you driving on the back of your buggy, it's a pan technic and they had to bring it there. The, the generator had to be fueled, the support staff had to be brought in, the assessments had to be done. Disconnections were done to the, what they call the eleven KV line from, I think it's from the. Greswell Power Station or if I'm gonna call it that. So it's not merely clicking your fingers and things get done, so I obviously asked residents, please. When you log a complaint, the city of Joburg in each of the relevant departments has got what they call an SLA. Standing for service level agreement. And what that does is with their years of experience, they know typically how long it's gonna take to do particular jobs. So and obviously you have to get staff on board to do that. Going a step further, when it would come to, to an issue as like water. Residents obviously becoming patient and that's, in the case of water, it's far more difficult to, to contain. Because you have to drain the pipe, unlike electricity, you just merely flip the switch. So that takes maybe three hours, then you have to do the repair. And the repair can take maybe a couple of hours, it could take maybe a day. And then you have to resuscitate and refill the system again and that takes many hours to refill also. So until you, you stepped into the shoes of a counselor and you've had this institutional knowledge and opportunity to learn this. Hence the reason why Rabbi Levy said, Lionel, come and explain this to, to the residents. Please explain this to my students that are, that are part of my show. Simply, we ask you guys who've joined us tonight to be the ambassadors of our ward. Please tell your friends and we have no problem rerunning something similar to this evening on another occasion. Tonight is merely just a sample, this is just a bite-sized opportunity. Just to really get residents to become familiar with what is the purpose of a counselor in the system. So where the counselor would step in after everybody's logged their complaint and nothing has been attended to after the SLA time. So in other words, if city power hasn't managed to repair an issue within a day or within three hours, depending on the type or the nature of the problem. The council would then contact the depot manager and ask him, guys, what is happening, why hasn't this problem been attended to? But then I need to obviously stop and tell you guys, well, we're not really getting one complaint. If you look at the reference numbers which we're privy to as councils and we see them coming through onto the WhatsApp portal. What we in fact see there is there, there are hundreds, in some ways thousands of complaints. So if you were to take somebody as my classic example that I would use. A doctor on the frontline in Lynxfield Clinic with a thousand patients with, which are, have arrived at his or her casualty. Can you please understand that the city has to triage out its problem? So when we have a thousand complaints or two thousand complaints that have come in. It's not for a lack of interest or a lack of dedication, lack of commitment by the staff of city power to want to resolve these issues. We simply do not have adequate manpower to sometimes deal with the, the quantity of complaints that come through on a particular day. And along with all that, when they triage out the problem and that's why I keep on asking residents. Can everybody please log the complaint? Don't merely leave it to your next or neighbor to log because the areas are segmented out differently. So maybe you're, you believe your powers on and your, and your neighbors off or your neighbor's powers off, well, he's gonna report it on your behalf. So it's essential that every resident logs their complaint because this allows city power to understand. The size of, if I'm gonna say, the size of the complaint and which areas are impacting on what. So you would have the substation for example, where Dave is in, in Greswell. Which feeds, I think Norwood, which feeds Sydenham, which could possibly be feeding Orange Grove. So how do we deal with all these things? That's why we say it's essential for everybody to log it and as I had with a resident last night. He said, well, isn't one complaint good enough? Well, I'm asking everybody, when there's a complaint, don't assume that somebody next door has, has logged the complaint. And I must obviously at this, at this juncture say, thank you to all those diligent city officials who are working with extreme. Under extreme difficulties at the moment with COVID, with lack of resources, with the city. Oh twenty, approximately twenty-two billion rand, you cannot run a city without money. So at, at, at this point, what, what else can, what else can a council do when things are not going right? So to jump out slightly and deviate from where I've just been. A part of my job as a counselor, which is really the real job of a counselor. Is to attend to executive functions in the city of Johannesburg and by what do we mean by that? There are these committees which they call section seventy-nine committees, these committees are those which are Joburg. Finance related, they are building related, they're JMPD related, city, excuse me, city power related. And in those committees, in the committee that I sit in which is called the municipal public accounts committee called commonly. The Ekrem Impact, what that committee does is it interrogates all city type accounts. And I've just deliberately in the background in my, in my right here, I'm just gonna point it out, there are batches of papers. Which, which became a, a bail of, or veil of contention in the city of Joburg. Where we were complaining about the delivery of documents to councils. Under COVID, most councils are able to work with PDF files, there's no need for paper. And that bunch of paper that you see behind me was, were just the documents that were required. Or allegedly or supposedly required for two meetings in, in January, which, which amount to over five thousand sheets of paper. Now just to think about the wasteful expenditure of the delivery of the paper. Not only the delivery, but the production of, of the paper, not only is it single sided, it's double sided. And most councils in all honesty never read that stuff. It's just really a statutory requirement that it must be made available. However, if you're not gonna read it and you only really are seized with the documents that come from your committee. There's no necessity for all those documents to be delivered to us. So that's in the impact committee where we deal with what they call UIFWE. Unlawful, irregular, fruitless and wasteful expenditure. Which is legislated that city council, city councillors like myself, Niran Peterson. I'm just the genie and, and ANC and DA councils to sit on this committee. We are tasked to ensure that we could tell and minimize the unlawful, irregular, fruitless and wasteful expenditure in the city of Johannesburg. And you might have read in the newspapers about the, the AVUS issue, about the FAU rent issue. We're not talking about hundreds of rands or thousands or millions of rands which are being wasted. We're talking about billions of rand and really that is the real crux of, of, of a council. We're supposed to be attending to those issues and with respect to everybody and we're not trying to get out of any of our responsibilities. Doing and attending to, to, to lots, to attending to water, attending to those issues. We are being honestly distracted from our core function. So when we have to go through that pile of paper and part of it which is coming out of, out of our committees. We need time to, to go through that, to robustly interrogate those documents. And how do you do that when you're being constantly distracted with what I'm gonna say? Issues which city officials are supposed to attend to. So you'll ask me the question, well, why are the city officials not attending to that? When Mayor Mashaba was, was the mayor in Johannesburg, he discussed the seventy billion rand. Infrastructure preventative maintenance that needed to be attended to, that obviously was. Sorting out power, sorting out water issues and we estimate that would take somewhere in the region of ten to fifteen years to fix. This is because when the city was taken over in nineteen ninety-four by the then administration. What happened is no preventative or little preventative maintenance was done. And as a result, much of that money, for example, the Alexander Township project which I think one point seven billion rand was stolen. By the, the, by the renewed executive in the city of Joburg which took over from the DA administration recently. There, there's, there's no sight of that money and there's no possibility of, of, of recouping that money. And hence in the impact committee where I sit with a, a lot of other diligent councillors. We are trying to recover and hold city officials accountable with consequence management. And to ensure that we have a, a committee which deals with disciplinary. Issues to ensure that those city officials who waste our money, who steal our money, who misappropriate our money are fired. Their pensions are, those, that wasteful expenditure is drawn from their pensions to the point that hopefully. They have no pensions left and also to, to deter people from, to stop stealing residents' hard-earned money. So that's where we are currently is how do we stop the theft in the city of Joburg? And as you see, it almost appears that theft, corruption, looting is a DNA of a bunch of people. And we're almost on a roller coaster and the way I've now turned it, it's almost like. We're wearing shoes coated in Teflon and we're standing on a, on an iceberg. Heading towards the ocean, so I don't see ourselves, and, and this, I'm sorry that I'm, I'm really not painting a rosy picture for South Africa or the city of Joburg. Either we all try and come on board, we need to maybe find working groups. But merely talking is not gonna help us, we need to honestly as residents be proactive. We need to put our money where our mouth is, we have to not say, well, my next or neighbor's gonna attend to that. Or David Levy's gonna attend to that or Steven Kruger's going to attend to that, I see Steven Kruger there maybe. Also coming on board with me with electricity outage last night and I always have to be thankful and indebted to Steven that though he stopped being a counselor. He's still a pillar of strength and exceedingly helpful in trying to assist me with my job. And equally, whoever's joined our meeting here tonight and I don't know the number of you that have joined. We need to join hands and I, and almost to the point, we have to beg everybody, please come on board. Much like the way Outer Corruption Watch, Freedom Under Law, Catharina Foundation, Parry. There is so, there are so many organizations out there, all vying for the same cause. To unroot this endemic corruption and looting in the city of Joburg. So David, at this juncture, in order to give myself a slight breather. Maybe you would like to pose another question to me, other than me just merely talking flat out. As this is not, this is not only my meeting, you are the host and I don't want to be the one giving the dosh here only tonight. Anything from you David? David, you're not mute, you, you haven't unmuted?
No, I'm unmuted, sorry. I just, sorry, I was just focusing. I see that David, the counselor David Fisher wanna ask some question. Guys, if any one of you wanna ask question, it's no problem, just unmute yourself, but let's do it one at a time. So David, would you mind asking your question, please unmute yourself?
Look, thank, thank you very much David, I, I, it's not so much of a question, but, but having listened to, to, to Lionel. I'd like to share with, with everyone, good evening everyone, I'd like to share with everyone an experience that I had and Steven Kruger might remember it. There was a meeting at Jabula, run by, by the, by this speaker of council some years ago. And they, they, they tried to explain how the, the municipality fitted together and how councilors worked. And it had a, a very large impact on me at the time because it, it kind of clarified the various roles. The, the, the graphic which I don't have anymore but was, was like the front of, of the Great Hall at, at Wits where there were two. There were two pillars side by side with this facade across the top. The right-hand pillar was described as being the legislature and the legislature is where Lionel and I sit. Where, where Graham De Cock is, is, is in as well and that's made up of, of a hundred and thirty-five councillors who are elected for every ward in the city. And there's an equal number of a hundred and thirty-five proportional representative councillors and they are the legislature and they do the. The, the, the legislature type of, of, of work which is to set tariffs, to pass bylaws and to create policy. Opposite them on the other side is the administration and that's where you've got city power, where you've got Joburg Water. You've got all of the entities that make up the city and all of the departments that make up the city. And they're the ones that actually provide the service and they're the ones that are on the ground doing the work. Across the top of it, you've got an executive, you've got an executive mayor and, and a committee of ten people. Each who have a responsibility for a different part of that administration. And they have got the political oversight of those people. Once I had understood how this hierarchy worked, I then was a lot more clear. In understanding all of the things that Lionel has been describing about how a counselor can, 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 can do some things, but he can't do other things. And I just thought I would share that with everyone because it, it, to me, it was, it was, it was a bit of an eye opener. It, it crystallized what it was with the, the councillors on one side facing off against the, the, the. The administration on the other and trying to get those two to work together, which is what, what Lionel is describing in terms of power outages. In terms of water outages and, and, and those sorts of things and if you look at this week's. Rosebank Colony Gazette which I, I think all, all of you will get now in place of the, the Northeastern Tribune. You'll see the front page there talks about the water outage and that was another one of those frustrating things which we, 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 we had to fight through with. We, with, with having no real power other than persuasion and other than, 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 than being a real nag. We worked through a day and a half's worth of, of, of a water outage. So yeah, those were the sorts of things that, that I thought I would just share with you to, to kind of give a bit of contextualization to what, what Lionel was saying. Thank you David for, for organizing this, 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 this meeting and, and, and for having me along, thank you.
Thank you, guys, anyone wanna ask other question? If there is any suggestion?
Thanks very much Dave, I think that probably just following a bit from Dave. I think that for those who might have forgotten this, this differentiation between what they call the legislator. The, and the municipal staff, we need to just take it to the next level. So we're gonna have the executive is what we're gonna call parliament and then we're gonna have the organs of state. Which there again, we have the minister, the, the department of health, the department of roads, the department of justice, all these relevant departments. And I think it's essential that everybody understands that. A parliamentarians don't, are not supposed to. The law is that we're not supposed to intermingle and it's called overarching into another department. And this is what maybe residents believe we should be doing is overarching and telling city officials what to do and that's prohibited in law. I think also another important thing for everybody to understand is. Even when there was a previously, an executive before nineteen ninety-four. It's the same city, it's the same laws, it's the same buildings, it's the same departments. Similarly, before nineteen ninety-four, it was the same executive national party by, to say that with caution. Then a new executive called the ANC, however, the, the, the departments are still there. And even if it was the EFF tomorrow morning, it's still gonna be the same department of transport, the same department. However, where we finding ourselves in this, in South, in South Africa at the moment is the political meddling which needs to stop. And that's where we're calling upon all residents, you can't merely expect a simple organization out there with no money or forty-eight attorneys to be carrying the burden. However, we need people to come on, 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 on mass, not only with money, but to actually do things and. And I, I don't know how we're going to appeal to people that when we have an issue in the city of Joburg. Where you feel, I've, I've contacted Lionel, I've contacted Dave, I've contacted, for example. Lionel hasn't done anything, so I'm now gonna get on the, to WhatsApp, I'm gonna send Graham De Cock a message and then Graham's gonna get on to somebody else's case. Really, if all we needed is for people to follow the law, be passionate about. Really, if all we needed is for people to follow the law, be passionate about the job, like myself, like Stephen, like Dave and Graham. If it only needs passion, and if there's passion, things happen. If there's corruption, all we're going to now see is that the country is going to fray into a level of disintegration to the point that I don't know if the rest of the world really cares about South Africa. We're here, but along with COVID, maybe the reset button that Hashem has sent us, what I'm going to call the nano warfare that is upon us. Hopefully, people will reconcile their minds. Hopefully, people will come together, people will find a, a, a common ground and understand that we cannot sail this boat longer, any longer on our own. Because if we cannot get ourselves off this course of corruption and looting, it's almost going to be the Titanic going towards the iceberg. And that means we are going to take on water and we are going to sink. So we cannot get involved in any fancy terminology. We cannot embellish on any terminology, fancy terminology. I'm not going to quote any philosophers. This is not the time for it because when you quote other people, that means you're just able to regurgitate well. So guys, we need to roll up our sleeves, we need to come on board, not merely the councillor there. If, if you need the councillor to, to guide you because we've now got the institutional knowledge, by all means. So let's see where this meeting goes to. I think I've hit my, my 30 minutes of talking. I'm parched now, the cup of tea is waiting for me. But before I disappear, please, anybody, Dave Rappaport, don't laugh at me like that. You're a far better singer than a laugher. I'm, I'm seeing you there, Dave. Stephen, I don't know if you've got anything to add. I call on my, my colleague Graham De Cock, who always fondly contact with his institutional knowledge of over 20 years to guide me in, in troubled waters or, or, or difficult residents. But you know, we do this job, we get pelted every day, but we come back tomorrow morning refreshed. I do my road running, I need my time out. And there comes a time when residents seem to forget that we also need to go to sleep at night, we are on the frontline and we cannot be there 24/7, 365. We also do have our, our own lives and we also do need time to recharge. So if anybody else would like to ask a question, please, please do so.
I think that Troy wanted to ask a question. Roy, would you mind unmuting yourself? Roy?
Hi Lionel, thank you very much. I did have my hand up, but I wasn't sure whether I should actually ask that in this forum or whether I should rather deal with you directly again, Lionel. And it's all to do with the substation behind us, which has now been very nicely cleared up. However, we do still have some issues which city power are avoiding. And the guy is just sidestepping us because they are very large trees, which cause a hazard and are very concerning that they will fall onto buildings at the back of the house. So there are some concerns and city power is not reacting. Where we are saying, we are now going to cut those trees down and see where we take it from there.
Okay, well, so that would be a typical example where we need to go through an escalation process. However, the way the city would like us maybe to go through an escalation process is really, in some respects, reasonable. In some respects, it's unreasonable where they want us to, to, to jump through too many loops. And from my perspective, I've shortened that process. I get, you log your complaint, you get your reference number. I have a look at the SLA, I know that they can't meet the SLA. I'm trying to be reasonable about that SLA. But in all fairness, Dave, you can just block your ears for a moment. Is that I'm really concerned about my residents in Ward 72. And I want, and I want the city resources to look after my voters. And yes, and Dave has to obviously also vie for the same city official. And the sad news is, for example, let me give you, our, our huge contentious issue at the moment is that, you know, service delivery is, is necessarily what you see. When we see the potholes in our street, when we see our, our sidewalks not being attended to, those are visually, those are like a visual impairment that we're dealing with all the time. And it's much nicer to look at a pretty bride, even if you've got makeup on, where you've made the mess look tidy rather than just the mess. And sadly, where we find ourselves with Joburg Road Agency with the, with the splitting up of all the departments, and that's a discussion for another day. They suspended 58 staff members. So our good friend, Mr. Kaya, who's a charming man, he, he's much like us. He doesn't carry the broom, he doesn't carry the pick, he doesn't drive the truck. And he cannot work without staff. And Kaya's area for Ward 72, or let's say the region E area starts at the top of Lynxfield Ridge and it steps right through Norwood, Houghton, a part of, a small section of Houghton, Waverley, right through Alex, up to Epsom Down Shopping Centre, so approximately 30 kilometres of space. And the, and the entire Joburg Road Agency have only got to their disposal 900.
David Lichtenstein wants to say something.
Sorry. Okay, David, I'll take your call, your, your message in a moment. So what we have at the, currently is that we have inadequate staff that are capable of doing the job and inadequate, inadequate resources, for example, vehicles and equipment to actually dispose of these problems. And as COVID has come up, what is now troubling us even more as a city and councillors is that this work is, is, is meeting a backlog, much like people who are unable to register their licenses. And so that backlog is now growing. And we cannot even begin to, to understand how long it's going to take for a basic, simple pothole, which, which might be a 20 minute job to do on the ground actually to be done. So we all have to hold our breath and we all have to pray that Hashem is going to look after us.
Okay, I think that we, over the past time, but David want to end up something? David, if you don't mind saying it quick and then we'll.
Are you talking to me now? Are you talking to me now, David Rabbah?
Yeah, who's speaking? Who's speaking?
It's David Lichtenstein.
Yes, David, Bahavud, speak.
I'm going to pose this question to Lionel, you know, we've been sitting with a problem for 12 years in our area, right in Fairmount, and I'm referring to the Fairmount soccer fields. I don't know how long, and Stephen Kruger, who's on, who's attending this meeting tonight, will bear with me. In 2008, we started off having meetings after meeting after meeting on trying to fix our area up. The residents are up in arms, we, over the years, it's just got progressively worse. We've got the, the soccer fields, Fairmount look absolutely disgusting. The tennis courts have dilapidated, the neighbours around keep on complaining. The noise that goes on, it's just, it's ludicrous. And we've been having meetings for 12 years. When will this ever come to a stop? That is my question.
Okay, David, I'm going to give you a short question. Firstly, I shouldn't be speaking on the, on behalf of Joburg Property Company, who are, in my view, a delinquent organisation, heavily looted and misappropriating money in, in all directions. And I would have to take responsibility for my comments, which I'm, I'm happy to do because I can see that from the impact reports. However, what we're seeing with Joburg Property Company, people are trying to run the city from either their cellphone or their laptop. There are no people who are actually on the ground doing the work. Why Stephen couldn't get Fairmount sorted out, why I'm having difficulty sorting it out. As I did mention to, to you, David, we've exhausted all the processes. The next available process is the ombudsman. And if it's not attended to by the ombudsman and you need to be driving that process, I cannot be driving it. I've done it from my side, I merely support everybody. This complaint needs to be logged with, with the ombudsman in a very succinct, easy to understand document. And you need to spell it out to them, this is what the issue is, I'll discuss with this with you offline. And if the ombudsman doesn't continue to that, then I would suggest that your, your ratepayers association would need to come to your rescue or find a willing attorney that will sue the city of Joburg. And I say that with great caution, but somewhere along the line, we have to start to do that because this is called accountability and consequence management. And that is severely lacking in the city. And on, on that point, I want to close on one issue. The accountability and consequential framework document has only been rolled out in the city of Cape Town, that was under the DA control, which is legislated, that document has only been signed in and put through their, through their council in approximately August last year. So if you think that they've now, all these years later of the DA being in control of Cape Town, they've only now managed to get that particular document rolled out and deployed in, in their city. We, we pleading, and I say this publicly in this forum, I've given the city manager, Dr. Nakwarieni, the same document, I said, please inherit this document and do something with it. If you don't ensure that there is a framework which is required by law to be, to be, to come to council, the city manager, and if he was on this forum, knows that I'm particularly serious. We have no alternative as, as councillors to, to take our city manager's task and to ensure that the city has an accountability framework document, which is made a, 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 a public document and it's put to council that we can get accountability in our city and things can get done.
One second. Okay, guys, Lionel, thank you very much. Dave, David Fisher wanted to ask or to head up something. And with that, we're going to conclude because we over the time that I promised. Dave, would you mind just doing it?
Very, very quickly, and I see Roy has left. Roy, I think, asked a very specific question which had to do with trees at the substation. And if he's, Roy was talking about the substation in Sixth Avenue where we've just had the big problem, then, then the advice to, to Roy would be to write to Lionel specifically about the trees. Let Lionel send that off to, 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 to city parks who are off, who look after street trees. They, they would send out an obris, they would, they would evaluate it. So again, it comes down to, you know, one, one, one issue at a time. There, there are, there are ways to, 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 to get the, the right interface. But I, I see Roy has, has actually left the meeting now, so, but thank you very much, everyone.
Lionel, I would like to thank you personally. I'm sure that it was very enjoyable to hear you all, guys. Just in behalf of all of you to say thank you to Lionel. Thank you to Dave, Graham, everyone that was involved, Stephen. I hope that we got some feedback about what the councillor is supposed to do and what can they do, what they can't do. And we'll try to work together, please guard in the future. In the meantime, I would like to wish everyone else, keep safe, look after yourself and have a good evening. If you want to join us, you can always join us to this link. I give a sholim for those of you that want to join us for sholim. It's on a Thursday, it's on a Sunday. You're more than welcome to join us. Have a good night. If you want to be joined to that group, just send me a private message, ask Lionel or send me directly because you have my link now and I'll join you with pleasure. Everyone, have a good evening, look after yourself, keep safe. Lionel, once again, yeshakel, thank you very much.
Zorabah, thank you, Rabbah, appreciate the opportunity.
Look after yourself. Bye bye, bye everyone.